Call to order, select board meeting for May 8th, 2019. Can start right up here with the consent agenda. We have minutes from January 9th, 2019. We have warrants, PR 1943, AP 1944V, AP 1944S, and AP 1944. We have our Pioneer Valley Planning Commission alternate, Mark Dunn. And that is everything.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we can just do public comment. Have a public comment here for the next two fifteen minutes, but we ask that you keep it to three minutes if you'd like to make a public comment. Is there anyone here for a public comment? No, okay, we can go right through. Town Administrator Report, do you have anything on there, David? We could do that real quick or...
Yeah, it didn't get loaded in, so let's pull it up very quickly.
We can't.
Oh, it's in there now.
You can't?
Is it?
I thought it was mine.
I just updated it and it's there.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, if I clicked on it, it's there, okay.
Yeah, that's nice. Just send Jennifer Dunn to take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Don, first thing is the Compensation Classification Plan Study is moving along. Don Jacobs will be joining us a little bit later in order to talk about the progress made so far and where we're going to go from here.
Today?
Today.
Yeah.
We had a meeting with the City of Northampton on the Community Compact Best Practices Grant for IT services. The City of Northampton has a LaserFISH document management system, which they're willing to host for us for a small fee, which would be covered by the grant. And we had an orientation meeting this morning, and we're gonna have them come back for the Department Head Meeting on June 12th and get this project underway. So we received the state executed contract, so we're ready to go on this project. Senior Center Construction update, we're gonna be talking a little bit about this tonight. There's a change order to remove a buried drainage pipe, which we'll be talking about tonight. There is a further change order to install a metal roof, which is scheduled for your May 15th meeting. This is at Turka Park, we got the certified votes from town meetings, so that paving is now scheduled for May 24th. The Park and Rec Commission are coordinating that final site work. North Hadley Village Hall, we'll talk about that tonight. There is a proposed change order for the Hockenham Cemetery Marker Restoration. This will be considered at your next meeting. It'll be well within your budget for this project. Adul Use Marijuana, we're out to bid for the two licenses, two retail licenses available in town. The deadline is May 31st, and there's been quite a bit of interest in this, so we should get a good pool of applicants for those two licenses. Our IT upgrade project continues to move forward with Acuity Technologies doing an assessment of the Town Hall and DPW information technology, and they're presenting a report. Preliminary results will be communicated to us on May 13th. That report will be used as the basis for the next round of grants for IT upgrades for the Town Hall and DPW. We submitted the municipal vulnerability preparedness grant for dealing with hazard, natural hazard mitigation associated with climate change.
Sorry.
Thank you, Jennifer. Just skipping down to what's new and different. Our project for converting the Collector's Information, reconciling that with the Treasurer's Information is moving forward. The Collector reported that we're about ninety percent complete there. We are bridging two months, and so when we look at our April revenues, there'll be a... One way of looking at the revenues is what's reported in Vadar, and that will show a dip in revenue growth because the Collector's Office will not have turned everything over to the Treasurer in such a way that it would be accounted for. But the cash has been collected and will be transmitted, so I'll present this information according to what the Vadar report tells us, as well as what we actually know to be true in terms of cash collections. So just want to give everybody a heads up that we expect to see an anomaly in the April revenue forecast, but this is attributable to the ongoing conversion project over the Collector's Office. FY 2020 Budget, we've had a town meeting, we were very successful, that worked very well for us. Senate Ways and Means Committee has released their budget, and to date, there's no cherry sheet to figure out its impact upon the town of Hadley. There are two numbers that are available through the Senate Ways and Means Committee Budget Report. That is Chapter 70 and the other is unrestricted general government aid. Both those figures match what came out of the House, so I'm optimistic that we don't see any major changes in the budget moving forward. Senate will develop their budget proposal in the next couple of weeks. The FY 18 audit is pretty much done. Weeks will bring the auditors in for a presentation to the Select Board. And May 18th is the strawberry and asparagus supper, and June 1st is the asparagus festival.
And we have a Memorial Day Parade next?
Oh, yeah, we have a Memorial Day Parade next, and that'll be May 26th.
Sunday.
Sunday.
Okay, thank you, David. Let's just get a couple of things here behind us. How about we move just quickly to the debt exclusion ballot?
How about...
Or...
Do we need to do the sewer impact fee?
We could do that, yeah.
Is Christmas in coming?
No. Okay. Yeah, we can do the sewer impact fee real quick. Do you have any updates for us? Did you file the application?
We did. So...
And what did they say getting back to you?
He knows we're in here.
Yeah.
He come back with one hundred eleven thousand, and he said that that was per his calculations. And he come up with the calculations, and it come up... I don't know how he come up with one hundred eleven, because it was one hundred sixty, then it went to one forty, and it came up to one hundred eleven. And I asked him how we could adjust that to what real numbers are, and he said he couldn't do anything, and I told him that our next step would be coming to the board to present you with numbers that the machines actually use and what we anticipate. She's got the numbers, and the other thing is that, you know...
What's the difference for each of you?
We're looking at... If you want to go like on a year and say, all right, let's start now, one year from date of operation, and you want to revisit it, we don't have a problem paying more than, you know, whatever we agree on tonight, you know? That way, everybody sees exactly what the consumption rate is, you know? That's...
So if I can just tell you like what that graph shows? It's the different machines, we actually go down, we empty our machines every night, so that way we have an exact number as to what our machines do.
In a twenty-four hour period.
Right. So the different colors are different machines. I mean, as you can see, the amounts that we get on the different machines are... There's no predicting it. There are several days where you don't even use a machine. So I guess what that boils down to is that it's hard to say, it's hard to make a statement that the machines would run consecutively every half hour.
And if they did, we'd more than happy to pay...
Would be thrilled.
We'd be more than happy to pay the one hundred eleven plus something, you know?
And then after that, you have the water bills, our water bills from our previous year, 2018, which shows actual usage.
And sorry, would this be for...
This is for our laundromat that we currently have.
Right, and would the number of machines be identical?
No, there actually, we have twenty-four machines in our current laundromat.
Yep.
And so with the mat, with the little layout I showed you, we're putting in twenty.
And is this...
You're putting in how many?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Yeah.
And you have how many in the other place?
Twenty-four. Yeah. So my figures come out to be that we used a total of eight thousand four hundred twenty-six cubic feet. That was the total for 2018, which equals sixty-three thousand thirty gallons total for the year. Sixty-three thousand thirty divided by sixty-three, sixty-five days, is an average of one hundred seventy-two sixty-eight gallons per day. And that's based on twenty-four washers, not twenty.
How many was that? I'm sorry.
That's based on twenty-four washers.
How many gallons?
Six... I think you've got a sticky on your last page.
Oh, right.
Yeah, sixty-three thousand?
So if I did it with my calculations, and if I took the sixty-three thousand and even divided that by twenty machines, as proposed on what we're doing here in Hadley, comes out to three thousand one fifty-one fifty. And then if you multiply that by the fifteen fifty that is required by the town, it comes out to the forty-eight, eight forty-eight, twenty-five. So the other, and the other point that I want to make too, is that the population in Winchester where we have our laundromat is forty-four hundred people. The population here is only like nine hundred more. So we're pretty similar.
So how, in your, maybe it's on the application, but how many gallons are they assuming that you will use based on their formula?
They didn't give us that number, but they're saying...
I'm trying to calculate that.
Four hundred gallons per machine...
Per day.
Per day.
Coming up with three hundred and twenty-five gallons per day, per machine, per day.
Sounds excessive.
No, the Title V...
You know, if you use that, I'd be happy with it.
The Title V guideline says to use four hundred gallons per machine per day, which sounds outrageous when I can actually present you with real numbers.
You know, some of the machines have top loaders, which are actually for the old generation, you know, like my mother, she likes a top loader, she knows it. Most people don't like the digital ones, so there's some machines that really just see a consumer convenience for, you know, for all walks of life, you know?
So just how many gallons per machine per load does it use?
They're all about seven to eight.
Seven to eight gallons.
Because they all have a diaphragm, most of them have a diaphragm in the bottom, so they all have like sensors in there, so depending on how much clothes, they might not use it. And a lot of people nowadays stuff so much in there, I don't even have their clothes complaining because they just kind of roll around, you know? So the water's just there, you know?
So no more than eight gallons?
No, I mean, that's...
That's the top.
Yeah.
These new models, yeah.
Yeah.
What'd you come up with there?
Three...
Three twenty-five gallons per day.
The original estimate was three eighty-four that I sent way back.
It was, yeah.
And that's based on eight gallons, half-hour cycle, it's about three hundred eighty-four gallons a day if it was running twenty-four hours a day constantly. So it's not that far off really as far as...
No, it's pretty accurate.
It's not far from what?
What your, the projections of what is being put in the formula there of...
Oh, that was...
Of three hundred twenty-five gallons a day.
Okay.
Based on your eight gallons per load, if for, in say, a thirty-minute cycle, you're talking three hundred eighty-four gallons if you're running twenty-four hours a day constantly. So let's say maximum number of customers possible if you're in a twenty-four hour operation. So you're not too far off.
And it's not going to be a twenty-four hour operation yet. It's gonna be, you know, seven to seven, or something taller.
But I assume that the calculation uses the worst-case scenario as far as...
So the calculation that was used by the town, it's the Title V, the septic system. So if this building had to be built off the sewer system, what would DEP require the capacity of the septic system to be? And it looks like in the neighborhood of three hundred twenty-five gallons per day per machine.
And that's what is suggested. It does, you know, obviously say that we can appeal that, and that's why we're here.
And we want, believe me, we want to pay an impact fee, you know?
Yeah.
We just want it to be fair for both sides, you know? We don't want to say, yeah, we agreed to one hundred eleven, and then eight months down the road to a year, you know? I mean, one of these machines is thirteen thousand dollars, how expensive these washing machines are, the technologies come so far, you know, the Speed Queens are just... They're not the ones you go down to see and buy.
Okay. Go ahead. Well, I was just gonna say, I don't know, David, maybe you can say, like, in this circumstance, what are our options as a select?
Well, the history of this sewer impact fee is that it was created by the Sewer Commission back in the day when Sewer Commission was a separate legal entity. They created it through special legislation. They operated it, created a number of precedences, and then when the Select Board, or the town, unified the fire, the water highway and sewer into a unified DPW, the Select Board inherited the sewer impact fee with all the precedent that had already been set. What we've done in the past is that we've offered payment plans. We've also looked at the formula to see if things have changed since 2008, I think was when the formula was put together. The money is supposed to be used for managing and upgrading the sewer treatment plant in particular, or anything having to do with managing or increasing capacity of the plant. And we're beginning to reach that eighty percent threshold, where, that's a magic number, where DEP will come in and run the show if we surpass eighty percent capacity on a year-round basis. So that's what the money is used for. This is how the process was put together, was by Title V, based upon the engineering costs for upgrading the plant, and unfortunately, you inherited it, what precedent already said. The Select Board has tried to work with applicants in the past to come up with some sort of affordable and reasonable payment arrangement.
I would like us to take under consideration because I think when Title V went into effect and they had these amounts back then, they certainly weren't taking into consideration the change in what could happen to a business or what the water use would be, and I almost think that it should be on a case-by-case basis. Seeing that they present the amount of what the water would be for twenty-four machines, I would like to see what this does. I think we, I would like to charge the impact fee for the first year, revisiting it after we see what your water usage is at the start of your thing. I would like to think we could maybe do the impact fee for forty-eight thousand dollars, forty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-eight, which would still be the amount of sixty-three thousand thirty per year, twenty machines. I don't know how the board feels about that.
So you're saying charge, charge them the one hundred and eleven?
I'm saying charge them the forty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-eight.
And then revisit it at the end of...
And then revisit it at the end of the year to see what your...
See where it goes.
And you'll have the numbers because it's your...
Right, it's your water...
It's not like we can change the numbers, you'll have the exact numbers.
It's up for, it's discussion, I just would like people to chime in on it.
So I would suggest, if you're, you're gonna be up in seven to seven, is that what the plan is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Eight to eight or whatever.
Yes, about twelve hours a day.
Twelve hours a day.
Yes.
So I would cut that one hundred, if we have the authority to do this, David. Cut that one hundred eleven thousand in half and go with that for an impact fee with a written agreement saying that we will revisit this, and if you exceed what we're charging you initially here, if your, if your usage is above that, and we'd go off of, I'd like to see it go off a rolling twelve-month period, because when the college students are here or not here. And then, you know, we may implement the remaining amount of that impact fee if it turns out you're using significantly...
Based on, yeah.
Whatever goes over there.
Right.
You know, the numbers that we...
Which is close to the forty-eight.
Exactly, just slightly higher.
Yeah, I just figured to cut it in half.
If it's feasible right now, then we would, you know, adjust it.
Because if it's twelve hours, that's based on a twenty-four hour estimate, so then we're just...
John?
Can we do that?
Yeah, you can do that.
Sewer expert here.
Hang on one second. Let me get back to my notes.
And just a question for you, is that a fee you're comfortable, if it was half the one hundred eleven thousand that we've proposed, is that something you're comfortable paying at one time?
Can we spread that out? Because the initial start cost is gonna...
Yeah.
We're gonna have roughly close to half a million invested.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, that works out about half a month. Yeah.
And I guess if we're making a motion, we could always determine if we want to make a three-year payment. Does that sound good over the course of three years?
Yeah.
You know? How much?
Yeah, I figured it out, twelve, not twenty.
Four years.
Yeah, what have you been doing, like forty-eight months? Is that my understanding?
Depends, some of these depends on the business, the size of the business, financing, timing, and so forth. So in general, we try to get it done in about four payments of either two years or three years.
Four years even.
Did you just say that that's twelve hours, not twenty-four?
Yeah, my original calculation was twelve hours. That's, that's twelve-hour calculation you got, David, not twenty-four.
One hundred eleven is for twelve hours.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're eliminating the option of cutting it in half? Or, I mean, it's...
I think we should still do that. I think that, you know, revisit it in the year time to see what the water uses.
We're revising the logic.
Okay, the logic, yeah, yeah.
What exactly is it exactly?
I'm okay with cutting it in half, but just on the, it needs to be in writing though, that if, if you're over, that...
It's no revert back to the full amount.
Right.
And we can settle like a four-year payment plan or something.
Is it gonna revert to the full amount, or what we use above and beyond that, and we add to that?
We would like to visit that at that time in a year's time to see what the calculations are.
Yeah, and in my impression, it could be a sliding scale, so, you know, if you're using fifty-five percent more, we'd say it's fifty-five percent of the full amount instead of...
Right, that's what I'm asking, so it wouldn't go all the way back up to the one hundred and eleven thousand.
Yeah, but it'd be like you use ten more gallons, so now we're going to one hundred eleven, that would be my understanding.
I think we can put the language in there that it's not to exceed the one hundred eleven thousand, but it'll be up to the board to decide at the time as far as...
Correct. Does that sound good?
Right, as long as it's on us.
Yeah.
As long as it's on a sliding scale, so...
Do you need a payment plan for half of that amount or not?
Well, we just did it there. Just doing it for forty-eight, for four years, it's almost twelve hundred dollars, plus we're gonna pay the sewer and water fees on top of that.
Need twelve thousand, not twelve hundred.
You want it per year, or you don't want it per month? I didn't know how you...
No.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe we have to pick broad contours of what we need to do, and maybe we can sit down, we can hash out the details and bring it back.
You're looking at a monthly payment rather than yearly?
Oh, I didn't know how, we didn't know how you did it.
I didn't know if you did it monthly or not.
We usually do it...
We don't know how we do it.
You usually do it in installments of six to twelve months, depending upon the circumstances. So payment, usually a payment upfront, then a payment at six months or twelve months, and then continue with that until the payment is completed.
Maybe talk to Susan, see if she can do a billing period.
And part of the reason for the installments and the larger...
We do, our water meters are read every three months.
No, I know, maybe she can do it...
So we still would know, you know, every three months, once you start up what the amount of usage would be.
And then we could do a payment at that three month, every three months.
But we will revisit the whole thing in a year's time, just to see what the whole year is, but you will receive three-month bills. That's how we do the water bills.
Right, yeah.
And the reason that the payments are set up that way is that typically, we have maybe one, maybe two of these payment plans at a time going on, and so it does take Susan or whoever, you know, their attention to send out bills individually. It's not like it's a high bay and system.
Right, exactly.
We're trying to spend as little time and effort on it as possible.
So we would have, you have them come in and sit down with Jennifer and David?
We would see David.
With you, David, okay. Well, I don't know what's on your plate, you know? Trying to divide it, you know? You know what I'm going?
I'm sorry to ask you for yet another meeting, but I think that's probably the most...
Between you and I, and so we can set up the...
We'll put something together and bring it to the Select Board.
Is there a license for the laundromat? Do we have a fee for that associated with, you know, like a restaurant or any other?
Not for me.
No, okay.
Or for me all, sorry.
Yeah.
The Board of...
Not that you send out.
Yeah, the Board of Health might have something, but that would be something that y'all would check in to.
I was just thinking, because that could be a good time to review the water usage, but we can try to set up a time too, on our schedule.
I don't know, do they actually have to come back, or can we make the motion tonight and just have them set up?
Well, I think the Select Board has to approve a actual payment plan.
We could, we could make a motion on the amount that was going, the full amount that we want to charge with the review period, and then subject to working out the financing.
Well, why can't we just say right now what we want the financing to be?
Because I think there are other factors that need to be taken into account, like the precedent and what we've done with others and...
But that's something you don't have to necessarily return for. Once David gets the payment plan, we can vote on that without you being here, as long as you're okay with that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, as long as we know...
But I think it has to come back.
Where we stand to the end number, and we're just gonna make the logistics work, you know, for the court.
Correct.
That's the main thing.
We probably want to spend a little bit of time looking at your own finances and finding out what's a livable timeframe for all these payments to happen.
Right.
So want to give you that.
Because we know the first six months, we'll be lucky if somebody comes in once a day, you know?
So I'll make...
So I'll have to take out my pension, you know?
I'll make a motion that we reduce the initial sewer impact fee to fifty percent of one hundred eleven thousand, and that we will revisit this in a twelve-month period from the time the laundromat opens, and we can then change that fee on a sliding scale not to exceed the original one hundred eleven thousand dollar projection. And then also, David will set up a payment plan that's mutually agreeable.
Second pass?
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Hope staying.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I will call you tomorrow, whatever.
I've been waiting for Friday all day.
Thank you.
EverSource poll here?
I think, is EverSource here?
President.
Oh, yep, let's go into the EverSource poll here, everyone, seven o'clock. They're six fifty-eight, close enough?
We're good.
Okay.
It's gonna be quick and easy.
Yeah, go ahead, you can...
So we've come up with an alternative plan and no longer require a bit of fan pole to be installed on Russell Street, so I think we're all set here.
Oh, so you don't need the pole?
Correct.
Motion to approve.
That's okay with you.
As long as we have power there, we're good, yeah.
Yeah, we found an alternative plan that was a little easier to do, so...
Okay. So this was for the senior center?
So do we have to formally close the hearing?
This is not for the senior center, this was for a reliability, a re-closer installed at 187 Russell Street.
Okay. Didn't we, there's a pole further to the west that we voted on a few weeks ago?
For the senior center?
Yes.
Well, there was one, but I thought there was one here at East Street and Russell Street.
That's what I'm here for.
Oh, okay.
That's where he's talking about.
Okay.
East Street and Russell Street you're not putting in?
There's been three poll hearings in the last month.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this is one that I think is separate from the other two that went, and I think one of the other ones was for the senior center, but one of the other ones was not for the senior center.
Okay, I thought it was in the general vicinity, but okay.
Yeah, we've been increasing our reliability in the area by installing some section lines and re-closers, there might be a couple in that area, but for 187 Russell Street, no polls required.
Okay. So do we need to do any, any motions to let out? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Charles, see you again next week. That was the easiest monopole we've ever had.
Thank you. Fifteen minutes.
Do, yeah, how long do we think the classification plan update will take? Do we wanna?
Quick and easy.
It's gonna be more around fifteen minutes? Is that enough time?
I can't set limits on the selectmen, but for me, that's more than enough.
Sounds like the plan to me.
Great. Go right ahead, go right ahead, yes.
Yeah, hi, good evening. My name's Don Jacobs and I've been retained by the town to do what we call a classification compensation study. I had a chance to meet with at least a couple of selectmen during the last couple of months. I think you received from David, actually, before I started working, an outline of what I call goal and objectives, what we're trying to accomplish. I think you gave the board that in fact at the beginning. And I want to go back and just draw your attention to that one-page document. It was my way of sharing with you what the purpose of the study is, and if you recall, there were two key words in that opening goal statement, one word being consistent and the other word being competitive. In other words, everything we do relative to compensation, whether we're talking about paying a physician or paying an employee, from my perspective, needs to meet those two standards. Consistent means we can explain and competitive, we have yet to define. But I would suggest to you that as you become more comfortable and understand the process that we're going through when doing this study, just keep that in the back of your mind, that ultimately deciding, based on where you are today in relationship to the marketplace, but also internally, whether or not you're paying positions and employees competitively is really, I think, you know, the basic question that should be asked when we do a study like this. But also by emphasizing that goal statement, it's my way of saying to you what this study is not about, so that there are no misunderstandings, it's really not about cost, it's not about my recommending or suggesting or in some way advising the board as to what you can afford to spend on compensation. That's not part of the study. And oftentimes, when people see that word or hear that word compensation, there's a lot of misunderstanding. They really, of course, equate the word compensation with dollars and cents, well, we can't afford it, or it's gonna cost us X amount of dollars. That remains to be determined. What I'm suggesting to you tonight, and my reason for wanting to be here tonight, is that it's really about establishing a process. And if you think back again to that one-page handout, where I outlined really three specific objectives. In other words, in order to do this consistently, in order to develop a process that enables you to determine whether you're paying positions and employees competitively, there are three specific things that we've outlined as objectives that we're proposing to accomplish. The first one has been completed, and that's the writing of a draft job description, consistent with basically what employees are required to do and what ultimately the town will establish as the so-called minimum qualifications. And the phrase minimum qualification really means the minimum knowledge, ability and skill someone is required to have in order to carry out their job duties. All of that information, so when writing a job description, all of that information has now been included into each draft job description document. And they've been written consistently. In other words, the format, when you see the job descriptions, are now all exactly the same. And when I say format, I'm talking about the outline of the description. Obviously, the language, the words in the description vary from one position to another, so don't misunderstand me, I'm not saying all positions are the same, but the format is identical. So what I'm suggesting in that regard is that once you've approved a proposed classification plan, in effect, what you're doing is approving job descriptions. And more specifically, you're hopefully approving a format to write all job descriptions for the town. I didn't mention at the beginning, maybe because I thought it was understood, but let me make sure I state it, I've been asked to look at non-union positions. So there are no, there are no union positions in this study. And I think you're aware of that, but if you're not, you are now. And when I say non-union positions, I'm talking about regular positions. The word regular means an employee that's scheduled to work fifty-two weeks a year. They may work ten hours, twenty hours, thirty hours a week, but the main characteristic that they meet is that requirement to work fifty-two weeks a year. And that's what the word regular typically means. So if there are other positions, and there are other positions in the town of Hadley, they're not quote-unquote regular positions, in other words, you pay someone based on when you require them to work or you pay them a fixed amount of money, your so-called stipend, those positions are not in this study. Okay, just to kind of set the overall parameters. So the first objective, writing quote-unquote accurate job descriptions, basically has been completed. Not to bore you with a lot of details, but that has been fairly involved, and I know a member of the board was at one of the meetings initially with the employees, where they really actively participated in filling out a questionnaire, giving them an opportunity to tell us where they spend the bulk of their time, in other words, what they, what they feel they, what they do, the so-called essential functions. But at the same time, it also gave them an opportunity to express to me in filling out a questionnaire, what they felt were the minimum qualifications to carry out those job duties. So once the questionnaire was filled out, right at the beginning of the process, then department heads were given an opportunity to comment on that questionnaire if they wanted to. That document then came to me and from that questionnaire, we wrote a draft job description. We then sent it back to all the employees individually, so they each got back their respective draft job description, and we came back and met with them. And gave them another chance to tell us whether there are any changes they wanted to make for those draft descriptions, but also gives us an opportunity to explain to them the process so that hopefully they feel more comfortable and they understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. All of that's been done. Took a while to do it, but it's been completed. The second objective, based on writing a draft job description, has been to develop a classification plan, and that's what you have in front of you this evening. That's the second objective. The reason why I suggested to David at the beginning that once we reach this point in the study, where we've initially written draft job descriptions and based on those draft job descriptions, I've had a chance to meet with all of your department heads and gotten their input as recently as today, while I was out here this afternoon. And a lot of that feedback really gave me an opportunity to understand better how they're managing their respective departments and specifically the positions in those departments. Good example of that is DPW. When I met with Chris this afternoon, I learned some things today that I didn't know about because I hadn't really had a chance to really sit down and talk to him about a couple of specific positions, which I'll highlight for you in a minute, relative to how he's managing those particular positions. So, based on writing a job description, I've now developed and am recommending to you at least the outline of a draft classification plan. Let me highlight a couple of things. First and foremost, if you are familiar with your current plan, you essentially have an exempt group and a non-exempt group. Structured differently, but what I'm recommending to you, you really don't need to have two separate plans. What I'm recommending to you is one classification compensation plan for all general government non-union positions. The other basic structural change I'm recommending to you is that public safety positions, and again, I'm talking about specifically non-union public safety positions. So nothing that I'm talking about has in any way, shape or form, any impact on any bargaining group or anything else like that, okay? But what I am suggesting to you or recommending to you is that we take the public safety positions that are today in that general government plan and put them in their own separate plans. And that's what you have in front of you this evening, a separate classification compensation plan for non-union police positions, and secondly, for fire positions. The basic reason for that, a couple of basic reasons. One, to make it easier for the board and at the same time for employees to understand how their positions are being paid, so that you avoid trying to compare public safety to non-public safety positions, in terms of what they're required to do and, again, the knowledge, ability and skill and so forth that I mentioned before. All of that becomes a lot easier and you don't confuse things. By separating police from fire, we don't fall into that, well, how does fire compare to police? A firefighter to a patrolman or whatever? We're not even gonna go there. It's just not really necessary. And so that's the basic fundamental plan, one basic classification plan. So really what you have in front of you now, and it's really in two different documents, one is what I call a characteristic chart, and I'm assuming you got this in your packet. And the other is an outline of a classification plan. In other words, based on developing a set of characteristics, which do basically nothing more than explain or define what we mean by each grade level. So what I'm looking at right at the moment is the general government plan. And what you see in the plan initially were six grade levels. And each one of those grade levels, you can see there's a bullet associated with it, and I assume you've seen this.
This is kind of a blank look on your face like, I don't know what he's talking about.
It took me a while to realize or to understand that one of the best ways to communicate what a classification plan is all about, the number of grade levels, is really just basically to explain it in layman's terms, not in numbers, not in dollars and cents, but in basic, what I call characteristics, that as you can see outlined on this two-page handout, explain to you what the meaning is or the difference between each of the grade levels. And you'll notice that for the fire and or the police plans, there are different numbers of grade levels. The purpose of the grade levels is basically to describe different levels of responsibility within each group. That's why you have grade levels. And at the same time, the number of grade levels, the hierarchy of the grade levels from grade levels one, two, what have you, is intended to match your organizational structure. So we're not developing grade levels based on dollars and cents. Your current plan is developed based on dollars and cents, which is one of the reasons why it's so difficult to understand. Or if you would explain what you mean by today grade level one versus two or three other than the dollars and cents, it's impossible to explain it. That won't happen again. Once the board ultimately approves a plan and in doing so understands what the meaning of each of the grade levels is, then it's relatively easy to explain why a position, a position is at one grade level and not another. Again, not based on dollars and cents, but based on different levels of responsibility. So that word responsibility, and there's different words you could use, like accountability or independence, is really the basis upon which then a classification plan is developed. And again, the check and balance needs to match your organizational structure, whether it's within a particular department or for that matter, the town as a whole. One of the reasons why you typically don't hear any complaints from police and fire departments, particularly about the hierarchy, the grade level structure, the rank structure within a police department or a fire department, and why a sergeant's paid more money than a patrolman or a lieutenant's paid more money than a sergeant or whatever the rank structure might be, is because they understand the different levels of responsibility. Again, it's not a dollars and cents question, it's a question of from a practical standpoint, what are the different levels of responsibility within that particular department? So your police department or your fire department, when you look at the rank structure, the outline of the characteristic chart that I've given you for both police and fire, well, that's already in existence. You know, we're not creating something that's brand new, just the opposite. We're mirroring, we're matching what's already there, whether it's a deputy fire chief position and how that compares to a, I don't know the rank structure, I don't want to say the wrong title, lieutenant, is it?
We have a captain lieutenant.
Lieutenant, I just don't, I don't want to insult the rank structure, I don't have it memorized off the top of my head.
Is there a lieutenant you can tell you?
Yeah, as it goes from a firefighter to a fire lieutenant, or from a lieutenant to a deputy fire chief. It's, it's pretty practical, pretty basic. And when you look at the characteristic chart, you probably already understand it. You know, it's pretty simple, pretty straightforward. And so what I intentionally wanted to show you was an outline of a classification plan without looking at dollars and cents. That'll come in the next objective, the third objective. So I'm not asking for the board to approve anything or vote on anything this evening, I just wanted to share with you the process. So essentially where we're at overall is that now I've developed an initial classification plan based on writing draft job descriptions and having talked to your department heads. I've also now completed a salary survey for you. And we've surveyed roughly, or not roughly, I can tell you, one, two, three, four, five, eight communities in the, in the Western Mass area, from Amherst to Berry to Belchertown, Deerfield, Hatfield, Munson, Montague and Southampton. And in selecting these particular communities and meeting with your department heads particularly, we've used both what I call operational criteria as well as demographic. And again, the real important issue with regard to the salary survey is how you use that data, more so than who you survey, you don't survey. So I'm sure right away you pick up on the fact that you heard me say Amherst. Well, Amherst is Amherst, much bigger than Hadley, but that's not the issue. It's not a demographic question as much as it is really more of an operational question, and it's how you use that data, whether you think it's relevant to the other data you collect, but that's what you're ultimately gonna see when I present that information to you at your next meeting. Okay, so where I go from here is that based on, unless you have questions about these initial grade levels or groupings, we'll then put together a salary survey report, I'll go back and meet with your employees, particularly your department heads, and share with them the market data that I've collected, and then at the same time also share with them my recommendation in terms of how to use that market data to help us develop salary ranges for each of the respective grade levels. So unless something's jumping out at you this evening and you just have a real concern about how you see positions initially being classified, keyword being initial, they're drafted without looking at dollars and cents, that tells me initially how to use the market data. Now, one last thing I just want to mention is that, and gets back to that word competitive. What ultimately I'm recommending to the board is that there are really three criteria that we use to define the word competitive. First one is obviously the market data. The second criteria is the rate of pay of the employee, whatever that happens to be today. And the third criteria is how long the employee has been in his or her current position. So what I'm suggesting to you, what I'm recommending to you this evening is it really takes those three criteria. For us to recommend to you that a position and or an employee is being paid quote-unquote competitively or not, we use those three criteria to do that analysis, to do that evaluation. So it isn't just market-driven data that becomes the be-all and end-all, or for that matter, the only criteria that you use as a guide, and I think that's the key word, to help you decide what you think is a competitive salary range. So the combination of grade levels and salary ranges for each of the grade levels, using the market data, using the rate of pay of the employees today in each of their respective positions, and thirdly, how long each employee's been in their current position, that's how we'll ultimately, at the next meeting, present to you a compensation plan. And when I use the word compensation plan, initially, there's really two parts to it. First part is the salary ranges, which again, uses those three criteria that I've mentioned. The other part of it is obviously how to pay the employee. So that once you're comfortable with how we've gotten the grade levels, secondly, how we've used the market and the salary data to develop salary ranges for each of the grade levels, at that point then, we'll talk to you about different ways to both hire an employee and then secondly, how to retain an employee. And that's the plan. Nowhere in anything I've just sent to you this evening is cost necessarily a factor. That comes last. In other words, based on a plan, then based on what you feel you can afford to spend, then the question is simply, you know, what's the best way to spend the money?
Just a quick question, we have a seven fifteen hearing.
Right.
One of the positions that's not in here is we've added a human resource director, human resource manager.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't know you had.
That's what I thought you meant, so, I mean, I think logically, it looks like it's gonna fit quite nicely in grade level four, but.
That's right.
You're probably gonna wanna be aware of that.
Yeah, I think, Dave, have I given you a draft description for that? I can't remember.
Oh, yes, you did. And we were waiting for town meeting to approve that.
Right. And again, I'm glad you raised that point, I wasn't aware that you actually have approved the position, but classifying it becomes that easy.
Exactly.
You know what I mean? I mean, you have a general understanding of what the level of responsibility of that position, and then when you go to compare to other positions, what we're trying to do is compare comparable positions in terms of, not that they do the same thing, because they obviously don't, but the question is, do they have comparable levels of responsibility? And if not, you know, what are they?
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, in general, you don't look at education, or experience, or anything like that?
Yes, we do, that's part of the job description, those are two.
They're in each one of these levels?
Absolutely.
It doesn't show it here.
Yeah, the only reason, I'd have, I've just tried to highlight what I think are the most important criteria, to make it as simple for you to understand as possible. Within each grade level, or within each rating of a position, there are actually 13 rating criteria, education and experience being two of the 13. All I've done here is highlight to you the most important. So in other words, when you look at, for example, general government grade level one, and I promise I'll stop, you notice it says direct supervision in bold print. And then it gives you an explanation of what we mean by the phrase direct supervision. It doesn't say high school degree, associate's degree, or anything else, it describes a level of responsibility, which gives you the flexibility frankly, to decide, well, you know, with an entry-level position, which is what direct supervision means, well, it kind of makes common sense that the minimum education level for that, a position in grade level one, probably would be a high school degree. Whereas if you go to the, well, I don't know, any of the other grade levels, the level of education and/or experience, you have flexibility in deciding what those minimums should be, without necessarily pushing a position from one grade level. That's not what moves the classification of the position. What's really much more important is, again, what I keep saying, is the level of responsibility. And you'll have, I think, once you see the job description, and you see all 13 of those rating criteria, I think you'll have a better understanding of, you know, what I'm rambling on about here.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Last but not least, timeframe-wise, David and I are meeting next week. As I said before, I've collected the market data. I hope to have a plan, meaning grade levels and salary ranges. This is only a working document, it may not look exactly the same as this, once we look at the salary data. Okay? So it's not a so-called final recommended plan. You'll have it done, it'll be done before the end of this month.
Okay.
Just to give you a timeframe, and then I welcome the opportunity to come back and show you a complete plan, everything but the employee part. You'll see the grade levels and the ranges, once that's approved, tentatively, then I think you're ready to talk about how to pay employees.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, David.
Okay, now we have a 7:15 dog hearing. Just like to say that this is, this is a hearing to consider a vicious dog complaint. The Board of Selectmen is bound by Mass General Law as to what we can do regarding this complaint. There is a thorough appeal process involved with this. The Board can make a determination to dismiss this complaint, to see if the dog is by definition a nuisance or dangerous. And I think that's about all I wanted to say, just to start the hearing, and let you know what's happening. Anyone that is here to be testifying in this dangerous dog hearing, can you please stand and raise your right hand, so that I can administer an oath? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony to be given in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Thank you. Would the animal control officer identify yourself, your position, certifications, and report your findings to the select board?
Yes, my name's Kyle Dragon, I'm the animal control officer for the town of Hadley. Hired 2015, certified by the Commonwealth in 2016. We're here today in regards to an incident that occurred on April 18th, in which two dogs alleged to blind Mr. Golinski, breached private property, and attacked a dog belonging to the complainant, Ms. Chudzik. Just before 7:40 a.m., Ms. Chudzik called 911 on the 18th. She reported to the dispatcher her dog had just been attacked and pinned to the ground by two dogs. This happened inside a fence horse corral on private property of her father. During this incident, the complainant advised that her dog was pinned, the attack only ended after a short time, once a horse exited the barn startling the two dogs, she was then able to remove her dog. Of note during this, the complainant became concerned for the safety of her dog during the attack, as well as an eight-week-old puppy that was present, and a juvenile child of a friend that was also present, that was in her care.
Ms. Chudzik, would you please identify yourself and give your recollection of the incident?
Suzanne Chudzik, Sixth West Street, Hadley. So that morning, I had gone to my father's house with my friend's daughter and my two dogs, my new puppy and my older dog. And my daughter's friend and I were standing in the barn, literally like, here's where we're standing, and here's the doorway to the barn. And she and I were standing here with my puppy, and we were talking about the horses. And I heard my other dog start yelping, so, I mean, literally steps, I look out the barn door, and that's when I saw the two pit bulls pinning my dog to the ground. And I'm like, oh my God, Haley, we've got to help her, you know? So we run out of the barn, get into the corral, and the corral is from where we were, probably to the wall, is how far the corral was. And I'm like, oh my God, if you see the puppy, that's it. So I scoop up the puppy, and I get my friend, my daughter's friend, I put the puppy in her arms, and I shuffled them into the barn and closed the door, because I was afraid that the dogs would go after them. And as I was doing this, my, one of my horses came out of the barn, and kind of out of character for her, she's kind of trotting out of the barn with her head down, and it startled the dogs, and they kind of fell back off of my dog, and that's when my rough dog ran over to me, and I picked her up and I put her in the barn, and I closed the door, and to make sure that they were safe. And the dogs started to run off, and I took a video of them as they were leaving the corral, and that's when I called 911. And when, you know, we were waiting for the police officer to show up, and we stayed down in the barn, me and my friend's daughter and the dogs, because I was afraid that, you know, the dogs might come back. And at that point, I wasn't sure where they were, I kind of looked out the barn window to see them off in the corner of the pasture going into the woods. And like, they were heading towards Rocky Hill Road, because there's another pasture or field there. And when the police officer finally got there, I looked to see that the coast was clear, and we carried both dogs up to my truck, and I put my friend's daughter and the two dogs in the truck, because I figured they'd be safe there. And that's when I started speaking with the police officer, and as I was telling him what was going on, what happened, I can hear on the scanner, they're saying, oh, there's reported the dogs over on Rocky Hill Road. So, you know, we're talking, the dogs come running back through the yard again. And he's like, go get in your truck, because we didn't know what was going to happen. So I get in my truck, and then I started taking another video, why not? And then he's just, you know, I'm like, what are you going to do, what are you going to do? And he's like, on the watch and see where they go. And then they finally, you know, caught up with them. I watched them as they ran over to my uncle's house, from my father's house to my uncle's, they were hanging out in his yard a bit, up the driveway. And then I guess they finally, when they were on Breckenridge, that's when they finally caught them. And from there, you know, I don't know what happened, but I know that Kyle asked me to go and write down, you know, an incident report of what happened. And my friend's daughter, she also went too. She would have been here tonight, but she's back in Ohio. So they do have her statement also. And, you know, the whole thing is, you can't even be on your own property and be safe. You know? I mean, is that how we have to live in this town? It shouldn't be, it really shouldn't be. I mean, don't people want to be safe in this town? I even made sure I stopped and told a couple of people that I know on the street that have small children, because I told them you might want to keep an extra eye out, because they're probably not safe either. Because those dogs will go after anything smaller than them. And they're big dogs. And that day, I had to go to the vet with my new puppy, and I had them check out my dog also. And, you know, the vet said she seems like she's got a bruise on one of her legs, and she seemed very sore. And she was, she was at walking, like she was very sore the next couple of days. You know, my dog weighs 26 pounds. Those dogs are probably 80, 85 pounds. They're three times the size of my dog. It's not much of a, you know, competition there, not much of a, you know, even fight, especially if you've got two on one. So I just really would like for my animals to be safe, and everybody else's, but how are we going to come about that? It's kind of up to you guys, but, you know, just, things like this shouldn't happen, especially a second time around.
Thank you. Mr. Dragon, do you have any questions for her?
I do. Ms. Chudzik, what would you say the distance was from your father's property to Mr. Golinski's property approximately?
It is at least three-quarters of a mile, probably closer to a mile.
Okay. Did your dog during that time breach any of the property owned by Mr. Golinski?
No.
Were any of the dogs known to you from any prior offenses?
Yes, they were. Puppy Puppy has attacked my dog a few years ago, I don't know, maybe six years ago. And the other one, Darius, I never knew him to be aggressive, but he was a younger dog then. And, well, sometimes they change.
Mr. Golinski, would you please identify yourself and make a statement, or ask any questions?
Yes, I am Ed Golinski, the owner of the dogs. It is my fault the dog was loose. Puppy Puppy's on rehabilitation, she had Lyme disease last winter, I got some medical records to prove it, she will have some full disability for chronic pain and limping. So I was running here trying to get her back in shape under a vet's orders, and she started probably chasing coyote deer. And so it's, and both dogs are neither bothered for people. I have the police report. And the police did see the dogs up her place, and I don't believe my two dogs attacked her dog. Like she says, her dog's 26 pounds, my two dogs are roughly 160 pounds together. If they attacked them, her dog would be a pile of fur. So that didn't happen. And I have the police report here saying, they looked at Ms. Chudzik's dog and saw nothing wrong. And in the past, when I was with Ms. Chudzik, I was up her house, her dog come out, my dog's in the vehicle, that case could have went either way. But she also accused me in the past falsely of saying my dog bit a horse, and I got the old report from a meeting that was never proven. Now here is the police report, and it said all her dogs looked fine. So basically, if my two dogs attack you, I mean, you're talking 160 pounds compared to 30, there's going to be fur flying, there'll be blood, and a bruise or two, she probably banged them off the truck bringing them in. Here's the police report, this is my first bit of evidence. Who wants to start? I've been in violation because I did let the dog get out of my sight. And here's a medical report on the dog, he probably will need surgery, it was like $700, I put on x-rays last fall because they're trying to diagnose the problem. So he's actually on the disability list, he's probably 50% capable of what he used Back then, she reported that, let's see where this is. Ms. Chudlo backed in, asked if the dog had ever attacked anyone, never another person, and Ms. Golinski says no. Ms. Chudzik, Susan, stated that the dog bit a horse in the past, but there's no record of this on particular, on this particular dog. In other words, she'd made false accusations, which are proven by this, that weren't proven at all. And my two dogs attack hers, and no blood or fur missing, that's impossible. And the police noted her dogs were in perfect order, no hair parted, neither were mine, no blood. So for some issue, she could have been nervous, didn't understand it. It doesn't match up to the police report. Because like she said, her dog's 26 pounds. Any more questions, or?
Yes. Kyle?
Yes, we'd like to make. Mr. Golinski, what would you say the distance was from your property to Ms. Chudzik's property?
The main farm is probably a half-mile from Mr. the parents' property, my house is closer to a mile.
A mile?
Yes. And also, Mr. Hardwick, when he was over, he said the dog was walking funny, because does have some chronic injuries, and it might need surgery. So it's, they shouldn't have been here, I don't deny that, I'm not denying that. The idea is there was no vicious attack, like she says.
All right, and you do agree that Puppy Puppy was found in violation?
Oh, yeah. Because I didn't realize she healed that good, I gave her extra pain, her extra pain because she made a little farther than I thought. So it's a...
Per the requirements of that order, is Puppy Puppy supposed to be kept confined?
Yes, unless I take her for a ride.
Per the requirements of that order, is Puppy Puppy supposed to be restrained while in an automobile?
Yes, but under the current condition, that would turn into animal cruelty, because her chronic pain and injuries would have hit. So I put a heavy chain, or put a muzzle on, I had her carrier for a month, she could not get out of the house. I built ramps, the front, I got a pin all set for it. So I got a ramp and a pin, and I want to bring her out of the house, because she's on a disability list. So that's why I did break that rule, which I should have, you know, I could, but I'd be dealt for animal torture, and I figured enough common sense between the board. You look at the medical reports, the dog is hurting, it got chronic pain, and why should I add more pain? Technically, animal cruelty, you put a heavy chain on. I didn't tell you about that, but I got the paperwork here, so it will come out. And as far as for insurance, that's the other one. My homeowner's was canceled after Pucci was euthanized, so I got another company, and they said they might be able to get in that fair plant, but there are certain dogs, they don't want on the list. And both those dogs are friendly, because Ms. Chudzik played with Puppy Puppy in the past, which used to work for me. So it's, Mr. Cook met Darius and the others, so it's, they're not all that bad.
Is Puppy Puppy allowed to run free?
No. I know, I admitted she was. I was training her because she was on the disability list, and she was, I said I gave her extra pain, but it was a little farther than I thought. But she's still, even Hardwick says, she's not moving that well. But she did cover some ground, and I am in violation, and I'm not denying it. But what I'm contesting is, if my two dogs attacked her dog like they said she did, we go to a funeral. 160 pounds compared to 26, and she accused me in the past falsely at the select committee when Ms. Chudlo took in a statement, that wasn't substantiated. So, so there's been a little bit of bad blood between us.
Officer Dragon, do you have the copy of that order from 2013?
I thought we had it in here.
If not, I got one, you mailed me one.
I got the current statement, so let's see if I can... Here's something we can look at, favorite copy. I think that might be it. And then, my other question is, you've dealt with these dogs in the past, I assume?
I have not personally dealt with these dogs in the past. Lieutenant Cook dealt with them when he was the animal control officer.
And were they vicious when you approached them, or did you?
When I approached them? When I approached them, it would have been on the 24th, that was the first time I personally met either of these dogs. The, when I issued notices to restrain following the incident on the 18th to Mr. Golinski, the dogs were not vicious towards me at that point in time.
Can I ask how were the dogs? They were running loose, you know, were on the property of Ms. Chudzik, and then they ran away, how did they get back to you?
Cops called me, they tagged them from Kamowski's house, because they made the round by another coyote.
Did the cops pick them up?
No, 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 no.
No, okay.
Hardwick says the dog been very friendly, he was impressed. And so I met him at the other cop's house, the guy works for Amherst, across Breckenridge Road. So I met him there, the dog, I picked up the dog, and went with me, then I ran into this fellow later.
Okay.
They're on the way back home, they're almost there. And there were no trouble through the other guys, it went by Mike Kamowski's place, he got goats, he got all kinds of animals, and none of the pins were kicked in, nothing like that. So it's a, it's a matter of interpretation, what you call an attack.
So can I...
Well, there is, I hate to say this to you, Ed, is there is a leash law.
Oh, I know that, I was trained, but dogs in disabilities, I made a mistake.
It doesn't matter whether they're on disability.
I know that, but that's why I did it. I didn't let the dog loose, I don't let the dog loose every day, by any means.
You shouldn't let the dog loose any day.
I know, but he's hurting, so I vet-wanted to get him back in shape, that's why I did it.
You need a big enough pin, then.
Well, I got a big enough pin, but I'm trying to rehabilitate him, I got all the vet...
Put him on a leash and walk him.
Ah, I got arthritis, new hip and stuff, I don't like that.
That's how my daughter had to do her dog when he had an ACL done.
I know, because I had to take her out for about a month, but she couldn't walk, now she probably had surgery covered up. I did boost, there's no doubt about it, what the penalty is, I'll set, I'm not complaining. What I'm disputing is, her passed history with me, and also, these dogs are not that vicious, that dog wouldn't be, look at the weight. And I can get the cop then to testify, the dogs were nice, like he says.
Heart rate?
Heart rate, yeah, something like that.
Just a question for you, so you were talking about, you know, your concerns about potential animal cruelty when the dog is in the vehicle.
Yeah, because I have a car event, if I have to put a chain on or a leash, it's unvalid anyway, he's, some of this chronic pain might not go away from Lyme disease.
Right, so a question is, the dog doesn't have to be in the car, correct?
He likes to get out psychologically, they all for rights of the same.
I wasn't talking about his mental health, I was just asking...
Well, that's part of the whole picture. You piss off a dog, it makes him more irritated. You got chronic pain, you put a heavy chain on him, and basically make his life miserable, he's going to snap at you. I'm trying to avoid that.
Just going back, and what I'm trying to determine is if there's a possibility that you are in a position to adhere to... that you, you are in a position to adhere to the restraint requirements.
Yes. I do. I'm paying for it. Not my deal. It's not like, it's been years since I did it here. So the dogs overall have been good. It's not a repeat situation.
I got a question for you. Can he have any problem with the dogs when he came and collared them?
I don't know to what extent. He never collared? When Heartright came in contact with, with the dogs.
You're saying that, that he had located them in a couple of different places, so.
We believe they had seen the dogs.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Even myself having had interactions with dogs, I myself, if I was in a position to come close to them, I probably wouldn't allow them to get close to me. I probably wouldn't even try to collect them without Mr. Grilinski being there.
But you also petted, uh, Darius in my vehicle that time.
I, yes, I, under your control.
Yeah, so there was no problem. So it's not like it's a maniac dog. If I brought him, he'd start tearing the first person he sees. Not that extreme. That's why I don't believe those two dogs attacked her dog. The evidence does not match up, the police report. And there's no marks on her dog. No marks of mine.
Officer Dragon, the, um, it looks like there was a hundred dollar fine in 2013. Is that the result of the 2013 hearing? Is that?
I don't believe that we imposed any fine at the time.
Never paid a fine.
I just, I believe we imposed, uh, just restrictions pursuant to mass general law.
And so what's?
May I see that document?
Yeah. What's the, I guess, the, the fine or the, uh, the punishment or violation of a dangerous dog?
This is a document I have read by Lieutenant Cook to write to you guys. That would be a recommendation of finding at the end of this hearing. That's what that is.
Ah, okay, okay. I'm sorry. I thought it was April 13th review, yeah. The hundred dollar fine would essentially be as a result of him, of Mr. Grilinski violating the town bylaw pursuant to restraint of dog. Not for violating the, uh, the order of restraint. Okay.
Mr. Grilinski, at the end of the 2013 hearing on April 3rd, uh, there were several orders put in place. Uh, you mentioned the insurance.
Yes.
The, one of the other orders was you, was to construct an outdoor pen.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's.
That is, and it is in requirement with the order?
Oh, yeah, goes underground. Chicken wire, regular wire.
All right. And do you have the muzzle and the leash with, the three foot leash with a 300 pound brake?
I got, I do got the exact measure, but it's heavy enough, you know, I go with muzzles. I'll get a verdict from the vet and see what they think of it. I'll get their opinion. Because like I said, six, seven months from now, she might heal up good. And like I said, it might not. She might have two operations scheduled. If they do her knees or hips, she'll never run that fast, period. So her, she's not the same dog she was when she, uh, got in a disagreement with Ms. Chudzik's dog. She's just getting old and needs some parts. So so the same was opposing her back then to now probably wouldn't be fair because you won't need 300 pounds strength to stop her.
Is there a way for, uh, well, sorry, Kyle, it would fall to you to verify that the conditions are being met if we're to kind of reaffirm what has been put in place?
Yes, I can do an outside inspection.
You can stop up anyhow. It's been there for years. You'll see the ramps I made for the dog when she uses those because she couldn't make it up steps.
And I'm assuming that you don't need the board to?
That was six years. Yeah.
To, to vote on a leash law violation. That's, that's under your authority anyways, right?
That's correct.
So, okay.
Mitch, six years ago, you went and inspected what you had up there for the dogs at the time?
I believe I had seen the pen before.
So it was all in compliance before?
As far as I remember, yes.
You still want to make sure nothing's modified since then.
I update the wire for you don't get the rot through, so, stuff like that.
So we would have Kyle go and inspect that again? And really has to, those dogs have to be restrained. Mr. Grilinski, there's no doubt about it. They're not exempt from any other dog in town.
Why didn't you say if you were?
Well, I'm, I'm just, just let me finish my statement.
Fair enough.
They, you know, the animals need to be restrained. They need to be put in and kept. They're the type of dogs, one might not be one without the other. But when you have two dogs of the same breed and they can, and maybe they were on her dog and the horse spooked them, now that's a possibility.
If the dogs are vicious?
And they didn't have a chance to finish the job they were going to do. They were, you know, pin the dog to the ground. You know, that's, that's the start of it. Spooked by the horse, they left.
Those dogs don't spook. They deal with.
Well, the dog should have been there in the beginning.
I agree with that, but the idea is.
So let's not, let's not go there.
Okay, I got the police report. I'm not worried about it.
They shouldn't have been there.
I agree with that.
Dogs need to be on your property at all times.
They have plenty of, like, 40 something acres by there, so.
Well, you ain't got 40 acres that have, that are restraining them.
No. I got a decent sized pen.
Yeah, I know. I'm just concerned because I have three kids and I have no two families that dogs have attacked small children. And I just get concerned it's, was another dog this time. I have a dog too. And I, I have my dog on leash and it gets into things with other dogs. That, I don't have dogs do it, but I just am concerned.
Well, I got two grandkids, four years old.
Yeah, I'm just concerned.
They've been okay with kids. They never attacked the dog. Didn't show hostility towards him or Mr. Cook in the past.
Yeah, and that's how the dogs that attacked the children were too, that I've had experience with. So, you know, that would be my fear is just with a history and lots of kids in Hadley and just would hate to see a child get hurt. Um, and possibly like a life-changing hurt. So that, that's what scares me in this case, but.
Yeah, I, I think we need, we need to impose strict adherence to the requirements that were put in place in 2013. And unfortunately, I think if there is another incident, and again, I'm sorry, we can't really take the, you know, you love your dog, you're going to take the best care you can of Puppy Puppy. Yeah, but that has to be done within the confines of the restrictions that the board imposed previously.
Yes. And like I said, it's the first time we saw them here in years. So overall, it's not like I'm a repeat offender. This is not habitual thing that they're loose every day harassing everybody or cattle animals.
But they will never be loose again, will they?
There's no guarantees of letting them except dining taxes.
Oh, you sound like somebody I know. Thank you.
Don't say Johnny Mitch, yeah. But the idea is, like I said, you could get a bad storm. There's no trees by the pin. I watch for that. So just, you know, this outside thing's out of our force. I could have a cart come up, some drunky kid at night runs over my fence, dog gets out. I mean, could happen, but not likely.
Officer Dragon, in, uh, in, in your opinion, if you were to do an inspection and to ensure everything was in compliance with that 2013 order, uh, do you think this, these dogs could be safely maintained on his property?
So, Darius?
Yes.
Yeah, as long as everything is fine compliance. I'm a little leery, uh, with Puppy Puppy only because there was the issue in 2013 in which there was significant injury caused. And then the one time the dog leased the property, we have a repeat occurrence.
It wasn't repeat. There was no damage proven. That's not a repeat.
I have a statement from a vet that says that he evaluated the dog and that he found bruising to the dog's leg. Where that bruising came from, I don't know. I have two other people that gave statements that alleged that they saw both your dog and the other dog. So.
But the police says there's no evidence of any kind of hair missing, no blood. And it's 160 pounds compared to 26. So just, that's very disputed. The evidence points towards my favor because there's no marks at that time. Are you trying to tell me those dogs, it wouldn't have broke skin?
Is, is what I'm saying is that I get a little bit more nervous with Puppy Puppy because to get, the minute she leased the property.
Yes.
She, we, we have a repeat issue. And as you mentioned, we haven't had anything on the logs for several years. So.
I would, uh, just, I'd like to get our animal control officers' recommendation in this matter, but just want to make sure we've heard all our questions and comments, anything that people might have to add. That's outside of what we've already said. I don't know if anybody has anything else. Good?
I have something to say.
Oh, you have one more thing to say, yes.
I want to add.
Yeah.
I think it's clear based on everything that we've heard, the totality of the circumstances, that it's very clear that we know something happened this, on this particular day. Ms. Chudzik, who's familiar with the dog, who has seen the dogs before. And Ms. Chudzik, who is the complainant on the previous dog, she's even more familiar with this dog. It's also clear that the police arrived at scene, saw two dogs running. And we also have the report of a vet indicating that the dog suffered some type of injury. So I think that it's clear based on all these circumstances and based on, uh, Ms. Chudzik's sworn testimony that it's more likely than not a dog attack occurred and it was Mr. Grilinski's dog, uh, dogs. I also think that while I have no, I, I have no misgivings towards Mr. Grilinski. Um, I've never had an issue with Mr. Grilinski personally. Uh, I think you as the board yourself have heard tonight from him this evening that he himself cannot guarantee that this dog will not get off of his property. The previous dog order from 2013 requires the dog be confined if outside of the house, confined to a pen. Mr. Grilinski has said here tonight, he's got 40 acres. Now, if Mr. Grilinski is a, um, if, if anyone within the town of Hadley has 40 acres, they can have their dog do whatever they want on their own 40 acres. Mr. Grilinski is different in that he is subject to uh, the findings of the select board in regards to dangerous dog. That is very clear and states that the dog cannot be unrestrained under any circumstances outside of his home. It must be inside of a pen. And if it's off the property, then it must be, uh, it must be secured with a muzzle. While I certainly can appreciate the, the health conditions of, of Puppy Puppy, it's clear that those health conditions are not so grave that the dog cannot get a mile, three quarters of a mile to a mile away from his property and engage in some type of altercation with another dog. And so I think that based on the entirety of everything here, I think that, um, I think that any suggestions uh, that come from the animal control officer up to and including euthanasia would be something that you should consider. And with regards to Darius, uh, I believe that Darius should also be subject to similar, uh, requirements as to what Puppy Puppy was imposed, uh, what was imposed upon Puppy Puppy. My only concerns there are Mr. Grilinski's willingness to abide by that order.
I understand procedures. Like I said, dispute right here is, did my two dogs attack her dog? Cops said the evidence wasn't there. The vet says the dog was bruised. Did she drop the, hit the door and bring it to the vet? That's unknown. That's the gray area right now. So that I will contest. I'll wait till your ruling. And then we'll go for you. Because the evidence from the police report, I can get Officer Hardwick in here to say the dogs were, he was impressed how good they were. So right now, the big dispute is, were the dogs attacked or not? With her false testimony in the past where she brought false charges. But your credibility is zero. About that horse incident, there's no such thing.
Okay. Do you, uh, yeah?
Just want to add on the horse incident. The, the absence of evidence does not mean that the incident did not occur. Ms. Chudzik reported that one of his dogs bit Ms. Chudzik's horse.
I didn't say bit my horse. I heard that Tommy Doubleday's horse. And I heard that from, uh, Mike Shoreo because the dog come running over to his horse, house after.
Okay, so whatever, so, you know, I'm not from, I'm not familiar specifically with it, but I would say that if there was a report that we could substantiate that the absence of evidence doesn't mean that something didn't happen with this dog and.
But that's hearsay. Plus, the people who owned the horse come up to my place, looked at my dogs and they said they did not match the description. You're going saying they have probably Puppy Puppy attacked them because of the vetting, but that's not proven. So basically, it's, uh, we each got our opinions and I'll, I'll respect your board meeting. And like I said, it's, I did make a mistake letting the dog out, no doubt about it. But these are all good dogs. I'm really not super horses. If he's a real bad guy, I would have shot him and Chudzik would have killed the dog, yeah. I shot my dogs in the past. Out of control. Different reasons, talking to ones that are here, so. Now they'll probably get you for all kinds of charges.
Okay, thank you. Animal Control Officer Dragon, do you have a recommendation to make?
So in regards to Darius, my recommendation would be that the board finds him dangerous with the stipulations uh, similar to what Puppy Puppy had. I have written down here so that you can answer it accurately. Um, the dog will be confined uh, the pen, the enclosure that has allegedly been constructed.
Oh, okay.
Um, so securely confined indoors and confined outdoors. And a securely enclosed or locked pen or dog run area upon premises of the owner or keeper, which would be Mr. Grilinski. Provide further that such pen or dog run shall have a secured roof. And if such closure has no floor secured to the sides, therefore, the sides should be embedded in the ground, not less than two feet. Uh, provide further that within the confines of such pen or dog run, a doghouse that will proper shelter for the elements be provided to protect the dog. Um, two, I would like the insurance for a hundred thousand dollars as laid out in the MGL chapter 140, chapter 157. Um, for him to obtain a thousand dollars worth liability insurance for Darius.
Hundred thousand.
Uh, yeah, a hundred thousand dollars worth liability insurance for Darius. Or if he's unable to obtain, provide proof that he's attempted to obtain and been denied. Uh, and that when Darius is removed from your property, that he be secured with a humane muzzle and restrained on a chain or other type of device of minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds and not to exceed three feet in length.
So basically, that's your decision, Mr. Cooks, which I respect. So you guys vote on it to make this official? Or what will I know today? What the status?
Just let him finish and then I'll.
Okay, I thought he was going.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and that, uh, you will provide the animal control officer with license authority or any identified and ordered information for which the dog may be identified throughout the life of the clothing and not limited photographs, videos, veterinary examination, tattooing, microchip implantations or any combination of such methods or identification. And then lastly, uh, that all orders will be in place within 30 days from the date of this hearing. An order compliant should be subject to an inspection and verification by the animal control officer whom shall report back to the hearing authority, which is the select board, if order compliance has been met or not met by the end of a lot of time period, 30 days. And furthermore, the animal control officer shall annually confirm and inspect that all aspects of this order are remaining compliant. This shall be included in inspection of the premises and documentation to ensure continuous compliance with the order.
And that's for Darius?
That would be for Darius.
Okay.
Do you, are we to take these separately or do you?
Oh, so it, is the other, it's at the final discretion of the hearing authority, the select board, uh, what the final disposition for Puppy Puppy is at the, at this meeting. Um, based on what we've heard, it would not be unwarranted to pursue a euthanasia order. Given Mr. Grilinski has stated that he cannot guarantee the dog would not be confined. We have had two alleged incidents and the dog was found in violation of a dangerous dog order requiring to be restrained.
To answer your question, I believe that you should take them separately.
Okay. Okay. So, so I just, I just want to say that, you know, we can continue this hearing on another date if we want to, if we want to obtain more information or we can make a decision tonight, but I want to put that out there as well. If you guys feel you want to, more information about one of these particular dogs, inspection of the pen, whatever it might be, we could delay it and do it another night. We don't have to make a decision tonight, but we can also proceed with the decision.
Could I make just one suggestion? If you're going to put anything off for a period of time, I would at least recommend that you impose an order of restraint to confine the dog to the property at minimum.
Yeah.
And then revisit it at a later date if it's your pleasure.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm comfortable with Darius as far as making a decision tonight and I'm, I'm comfortable with your recommendations. I would recommend, and it's your authority and your discretion, but the leash law violation obviously is something that should be taken up. But as far as, well, let's just talk about Darius for now. Yeah. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
I was going to make a motion to accept the recommendations of Kyle Dragon.
No, second.
On Darius.
And any further discussion? I do have one thing I want to add. If, I just want to let you know, Mr. Grulinski, that if, if restrictions are ordered, you have a notification of right of appeal, you have the right of appeal to the board's decision in the district court, in the Eastern Hampshire District Court in Belcher Town within 10 days of the.
I know the clerk, my every minute routine.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to have it on the record. That's part of the record.
And I can get Officer Hardwick in probably for that one, something like that, because I definitely not going to restrict Darius. And like I said, it's very debatable of the impression of the dog fight compared to the police evidence on the report, her vet, the cops were verifying what they saw. So bottom line, it's, it probably won't be resolved today. It's not a surprise, but I appreciate your concern and I have no hard feelings against Mr. Chudzik.
In the last six years, you don't have a complaint on those two dogs being loose?
No.
None on record?
There's nothing on record. We've had any issues with the dogs since the hearing in 2013 involving Puppy Puppy.
I agree with that.
Like I said, if some drunk driver hits my pen and I dogs get out, I mean, you're going to euthanize them for that, which is out of my control with the dogs. Something's out of your factor.
Well, we'll take that separately.
Yeah. So we have a motion on the table. Any, any further discussion we could hear from the board? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On Darius.
On Darius. Yeah.
To have it restricted.
Yeah. So my, my biggest issue with Puppy Puppy right now is I'm allowing for the fact that six years has gone by. I think that should be taken into consideration. I, I have had an animal, unfortunately, that wasn't wired quite right and we had to take some extreme measures because I was very concerned about the safety of a young child on the bike path I was going for a walk. So it's, it's horribly hard and I get that. But honestly, my issue, my biggest issue with Puppy Puppy right now is Puppy Puppy's owner. Because when we're working with the owner and the owner is in here explaining all of the reasons why it may not be possible to comply, well.
I comply. Nothing.
That's giving me pause as to why.
No, something's out of my control. I'm not going to let the dog out. The dog's been confined for years and right now he's under training because of the vet things. I got a couple of bit of slack. He got a county trial, but he caused no damage when he was gone, no known damage to the police.
But you're not going to let him do that?
No, I don't. I was trained, she's doing better, I give an extra painkiller, so bottom line, she's back in the pen all the time now, so. And she basically was there all the time anyway. Like you said, it's been six years and the dogs are good to.
Are they now registered in the town of Hadley?
Oh, yeah. I catch up there so often.
Have they got their licenses?
Yeah, they even got rabies shots.
Self-control, baby.
Okay, so do you have a recommendation to make on Puppy Puppy?
So my recommendation on ritual findings for Puppy Puppy would be that if Mr. Grulinski had not complied with the 2013 order, which had resulted in no construction of the pen and that the dog was loose, because of that, that the board would seek a euthanasia. It sounds that Mr. Grulinski has constructed the enclosure. It sounds as if he is, he was turned down for the insurance and that he's working on securing.
Yes, the fair plan is what they call it.
So I would just want to say that I understand there are some things beyond your control.
Yes.
But in the case of Puppy Puppy, I don't care if a tornado blows through and takes your pen out.
Yeah.
If he gets out again, my opinion is he needs to be put down. And I don't care about medication, I don't care about just any of that.
If he killed Chudzik's dog, yeah, or hurt her horse, I would have shot the dog there.
So I just want to.
I have no complaints with that either. Yes, I understand very clearly.
And I don't care if it's within your control or out of your control. If, if he's out again, if he violates any of these dangerous dog orders, you know, our hands are tied.
I understand, but the good news is he was out and there was no noticeable damage by the police.
Is Puppy Puppy in good health? It sounds like he or she is.
She weighs about 75 pounds. The vet says she's in good shape for her age, but she got, you know, she walks a little wobbly and stuff. She's not a whip.
How old is she? Yeah, I'm just.
Ten or eleven probably, between nine and, I'm not quite sure myself. I hear those from my daughter. So she's on the downhill slide, but she ain't helpless.
The only thing that I want to add to the board is that, you know, while I respect Mr. Grulinski is here in front of you and he wants to, he doesn't want the board to take adverse action against his dog and, and you know, I hate to, I hate to open up old wounds, but relative to when Poochie, when Poochie bit Stephen Bristol in 2010, 2011?
My dad, yes.
That wasn't the case. Mr. Grulinski didn't take the action in which he's reporting that he would take and that was a person, that was an elderly person who was mauled and Mr. Grulinski didn't take the action and he fought and appealed every step of the way relative to that dog order, violated the dog order. We basically had to go through the courts four or five times to get Mr. Grulinski to abide by the order of the select board.
But also Mr. Bristol was dumping leaves and twigs at my farm for free. Goes on my property with a dog, he dropped off a 30 pack of beer. He's going through a slice and a green, I got a big greenhouse, 108 feet by 28. So when Mr. Bristol told the guy, I snooped down, I think he stepped on the dog. It's a dog who Mr. Bristol has never bought before. It was one good bite in his elbow. I gave him a post, turned a kid, took my sweater out, stopped the blood, brought him to the hospital. The dog already knew, so I think he stepped on the dog is what it was, because he knew who he was. And like I says, he didn't have to be there. That dog bit Mr. Bristol's house, I would have shot him there. But Bristol's at my place, getting a freebie. He was nice, he dropped off a 30 pack of beer.
I think Lieutenant Cook's comment goes to, he's asking us to consider a pattern of performance, which is what I was getting to is.
But there's no restrictions on Poochie.
But.
I, I took the legal process. I did the appeals. I think Mr. Nixon wanted to try to state the state law because I dragged you guys out so long, probably a year or two. Remember that you were a little bit set about the time frame? You're trying to get state law changed?
Poochie was in the freezer.
Officer Dragon, so your recommendation would have been to destroy Puppy Puppy if he hadn't complied with the terms of the 2013 order.
That is correct.
So since it appears he has or may have, what would your recommendation be in this?
My recommendation would be at this point is that we continue this till the next meeting. During that period of time, I will complete inspection to confirm that yes, that order is being abided by. Mr. Grulinski, I will make arrangements to him to use his property. He can hopefully provide me the documentation from the insurance company.
I'm working on it. It's a slow process because like I said, the laws are in your favor and you're out to make money. You can stop at pin anytime you want. I don't have to be there.
I prefer you there. Only because, no, I, I would prefer you there because then.
Bring a 30 pack of.
We both know what happens there. And if I have questions, you can answer questions and I.
You've got my cell phone, just keep calling.
So can I make a motion to continue the hearing on Puppy Puppy and Officer Dragon, can I also have you touch base with Sergeant Hartwright too and kind of see what his impressions were of?
I will also touch base with Detective Cooper on he made first contact.
Okay.
Okay.
And I would like to reaffirm the 2013 order for Puppy Puppy with the understanding that if Puppy Puppy or Darius are found outside of those orders, they will be subject to seizure confinement pending the results of a additional select court hearing.
So let me modify that motion.
Yeah.
I'll move that we reaffirm the 2013 dangerous dog order on Puppy Puppy and also continue this hearing until the next select board meeting.
Second.
And there should be, just a caveat there, there should be a fine imposed for.
That's correct. We have seen enough evidence as per the MTL to find a violation of the order and there will be a fine for that.
Are you going to have him construct a second pen for a second dog at this time or?
No, if he has one ten inch, it's of appropriate size for both dogs, that will be fine.
It passed before it's going.
If it is not, he has 30 days from this hearing to construct a second one and I will make arrangements to see him the first of the week.
So we will come back in 30 days to continue this hearing?
Uh, no.
You're going to continue for guaranteed? You made up your mind on Puppy Puppy. I agree with that, it's not a problem. That's the same status.
So 30 days.
Nope.
He had, if, it did not apply. If he had none of these things, he would have 30 days to become, to come into compliance. Within those 30 days, I would have to go and inspect and verify that yes, we are in compliance. It sounds like marginally we're in compliance.
Don't worry about us, no problem.
So I will confirm that we are in compliance for Darius.
So you want to come back next week?
Yes.
It's at 7:45. That'll be the continuation of the public hearing.
For Darius. Puppy Puppy, we agreed on.
No, 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 we agreed on Darius.
Why do we have other?
That was the first vote.
So what's Darius going to be now?
Considered a dangerous dog.
Same order as.
Okay, I will, I will contest Darius. I'll go to the clerk of courts and I will agree with Puppy Puppy because Puppy Puppy, like I says, he did do some damage to her dog, but her dog also came up, so I agree with that one. So I will contest the second one for I don't have to keep it confined because Hardwick spoke highly of him, so I should be able to beat that one.
So, so next week we'll be reviewing Puppy Puppy if we, we've got a vote, so.
At 7:45.
But the dog will be restrained until the appeal.
Yeah, of course. Oh, yeah, no problem.
Yeah, so found.
You have no problem within the next week of showing them the pens?
Take it going on tonight, if you got any balls. Why don't you go and hurry?
Okay, so any other discussion?
That should do it.
All those in favor? Oh, oh, I'm sorry. No, I didn't see you there. If you have something to say?
Following your vote, I can, I can just kind of ask Mr. Grulinski.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So the motion is we're delaying it until next week? Continuing for Puppy. Continuing next. Yes.
At 7:45.
At 7:45.
And reaffirming the 2013 order.
Yeah, until all proper restrains are confirmed.
Yes, yes. All those in favor? Aye.
Do you agree that you're in violation of the leash law?
No doubt in my mind. I'm not denying it.
Would you stipulate to the $100 fine until we see the clerk tomorrow morning?
No problem.
And we'll only do one dog, one $100 fine, not two $100 fines?
Well, it's not a fine for the, well, yeah, you could, you give me a breaks, I appreciate it.
The municipal bylaw does allow for the fine.
Correct.
So Kyle, Kyle will have the citation to the clerk's office by the morning so that you can pay that.
Set up a tab, you can visit a pen tomorrow. How do you want to do it?
I will, I will reach out to you.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Catch you guys again.
Asparagus festival is off the agenda for tonight?
Um, yes, I'm going to have a meeting with her on Monday. I've reached out to all of the departments that have interaction with this asparagus festival and they're letting me know where they are in the permitting process and I'll meet with her on the 13th for coming on the 15th if needed if she has not met with the police or the DPW and her permits are not up to date.
Okay.
Well, it's coming up for June 1st, so.
That's, yes.
So basically it has to be done the next meeting?
Yes, and she, she knows that and she's working on them and I believe she's been in contact with the police.
I reach out, I sent her an email yesterday and I'm back from her, but I do know that MassDOT is in the process of reviewing and processing her, the access permit for Route 9. I was in contact with Jay Yield today via email on a couple of different occasions relative to the permit, so I know that's in process with the state.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we just need to take a vote on the dead exclusion ballot that was approved at town meeting. This would be a dead exclusion ballot for, thank you all for coming. This would be for, let's see, I just want to make sure we got it all. The skid steer, the hot box, the mini excavator, cleaning and repairing ditches. And that's, that's all, yes, all those things. Right now we have the date set for June 18th, 2019 from noon to 8:00 PM.
Are we all set with them?
I believe school's out. School's out on June 18th.
Great, all right, so moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other ballot questions we should put on?
Nope, it's good enough, I think, unless you have anything.
You going to create some?
I got a couple ideas, but it looks like, looks like I'm not going to convince you guys tonight, so, okay.
What can we throw on?
No, non-binding questions like I always ask. We never do.
Like what?
Go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead. What do you want to say?
Take the vote.
We did, we took the vote on the ballot, but.
Okay. Aye then.
Sorry, I, I didn't know if there was going to be discussion, but if there's anything.
Now's, now's his chance. What kind of non-binding question do you want?
Go ahead, move ahead.
Okay.
I was going to say, tear down North Hadley Hall.
Yeah, that's coming up.
Put that on for referendum vote.
Yeah.
Right?
Because we've got.
Were you thinking that too?
Yeah.
Oh my God, I can't stand it, I got headache.
That was one of them.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you want to go to North Hadley Village Hall, we do need to discuss the next steps in that process.
I'm more than happy to make a motion that we ask David and Jessica and whoever else is needed to let us know what it would take to get that as a referendum question.
Yeah, just a non-binding question.
Non-binding referendum question and then we could vote on it. Can we vote on it? Do we have time to vote on it later?
We won't have time to vote on it later, but you can vote on the question tonight and then we'll get it over to Jessica.
Let's do it. Okay. Motion.
Motion to do that.
How, how do you want to word it? To knock it down?
Would be a non-binding resolution to demolish North Hadley Village Hall.
Yes.
And preserve the green space.
And preserve the green space. I would, I don't know if that's a motion, but I was going to suggest we have the planning board, the historical commission and the municipal building committee in here to have a discussion if we can tear it down or what the process would be to tear it down.
Bill made the.
He brought it up and I told him after.
And the historical commission is actually going to be discussing it.
It's just a non-binding question.
A non-binding question.
We can do a non-binding question.
I would say, can we phrase it in such a way that since the green space seems to be.
The issue.
An issue, I would say, should the select board move forward with the.
Demolition or sale?
Yep. No, I would say demolition of the North Hadley Hall and turn the entire parcel into green space.
Right. And that's all going to be subject to financing and everything else.
Anything, no. Or you, either like a A or a B.
Second.
Just demolition or sale still.
Right, there's already a town meeting vote to sell it.
Yeah.
So we're still in the process of doing that. We continue with that process and have a non-binding vote.
Just in general direction.
General direction.
That the board can.
See if there's any interest out there.
Yep.
In what?
Taking down, demolishing the North Hadley Hall.
And demolishing it and leaving it as park.
We're in a bit of a.
Isn't there a middle way?
What's the middle way?
The middle way is to divide the open space so that you save enough room for parking. You only need twenty thousand square feet for parking to meet the current bylaw. Twenty thousand square feet, you have sixty thousand square feet on the property, that means thirty thousand square feet for open space.
Nope, can't, because it's all under Article ninety-seven protection.
You, you still gonna have to go through that.
No, they got it all, that got voted down at town meeting, though.
There's, there's no way around the protection.
Because it was all or nothing, it was all or nothing.
Again, this is just an, it's just a question.
Yeah, I understand the problem with that, but I mean, it's just, I, I don't think we've explored that middle ground enough and, and, and I'd be interested to hear what the people in North Hadley have to say. Maybe a referendum is the way to go, but, but, you know, it's like you're saying, we either sell it with, and get rid of the open space with another crack at ninety-seven, or you, um, or you demolish the building and keep all the open space.
I'm, I'm open to all
Yeah.
All options in between as well, but I think we, uh, we wanna find that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to talk you out of that, I'm just trying to say there's another op, there is another.
You know, there's a lot of discussion at town meeting about it, that's why, if, if we had a little bit more direction of which way to go, I mean, it, it's really not gonna change my vote either way, I'd like to see the, the whole property being sold, honestly.
Yeah.
That, that's my personal opinion, but, you know, the people, the people in town meeting didn't want that, so now we need to look at.
They didn't want to get rid of the open space.
Yeah, they didn't want to get rid of.
Maybe we can get rid of some of the open space and
Yeah.
Keep most of it for the access to, you don't need a ball field, you just need access to the lake. And, uh.
We don't want an access to the lake, we don't want that.
We don't?
No, we don't. We don't want to be keepers of that, there's a hill going down there.
Look, I, I understand.
No.
Understand.
No, we're not going to, DPW has enough to do, they don't need to be doing an access.
Oh, I thought, I thought I heard Bill say.
Yeah, Dave, Dave's got a question here.
Uh, just some information, so I looked into the possible, uh, cost for demolition. We're looking at a range between sixty thousand and ninety thousand dollars.
No.
Get out your check.
If we do, if we do.
Make a donation.
If we do, we'll maintain access to the lake and develop it, it's access to the lake, there is a liability impact, so our insurance premiums would be higher, how much higher, I don't know, but there would be.
But we could also just leave it up.
Yeah.
And not have access to the lake.
Right, because people are thinking that, that it'd be nice to have a beach there. It could be nice to have a beach there, but.
You can really go swimming, you can float right in the lily pads.
That's what I was gonna say, all the lily pads you want.
I did talk to Randy Isner and he can make a recordable plan to split the property into two for about five hundred dollars.
Did you get a chance to speak with the real estate team to see what their projected value of just the sale of the hall would be without the associated?
No, I don't have that information yet.
All, all I know is that, um, three million dollars, is that roughly what we're looking at for repair costs?
Three point four million dollars to repair the building based upon two thousand thirteen dollars.
Yeah, so, I mean.
So it's around five at this.
It's either gonna come down or it's gotta get gone quickly, because, uh, I would be surprised if it makes it through another winter without repair.
Major, major repair.
Yeah.
So, would a ballot question be maybe one to demolish it, one to split the property and have a small section of green space?
I don't think people are gonna have enough information to intelligently answer the splitting, you know what I mean? And I think that conversation can all take place here.
Yeah.
This is just simply a.
Yeah, based on town meeting reaction, I think the green space was the priority, so this, this way we can make sure that people are okay with tearing down the hall and keeping the green space and turn it into a grass field.
As number one, we still have to go through planning board, we may have to do the possibility of the Z B A
Yeah.
With some type of rezoning for that building, I mean, so there's still much, so much more to that piece that people just don't understand.
Right, right.
Well, the way I understand is we're gonna lose two of the, two historic buildings this year instead of just one.
But you're getting, you're, we're be adding three brandy new ones.
They'll be historical in about a hundred years.
But the younger gener, the younger generation doesn't want to be keepers of these old buildings. As much as you might think they do, they don't, and I've heard it for multitude of younger people. David can attest to that, he's in that range.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing at all for the town to keep that building as a town building, no.
I went to Hooker School, tear it down.
If we can't, if we can't sell it, if we can't sell it, then, you know, you gotta take it down, I agree with that.
We had, we had opposition when we took down the old gym, and that was falling down.
So they could have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion, yes, and a second, so why don't we vote if we want to put this non-binding question onto ballot for June eighteenth?
Do you have the kind of, uh, phraseology that, uh, to encompass the green space issue and demolition data?
Uh, I'll work something, I'll work something out.
Alright, okay.
Gotta get it to Jessica tomorrow morning.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Can I ask, Callie, I, I have been in contact with the Realtor and I've told her I'll get back to her after your meeting tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask her to continue to have patience, or what, what guidance would you like me to give to her?
I would just like to know the value of the building if we split off the ballpark.
It sounds like the board wants to just keep going and sell what we can sell right now at this point.
I'd take, go, go for the sale of the building.
Exactly.
And they.
I mean, isn't that getting ourselves into more than, I mean, I mean, we can try, but I, with, what are the historical restrictions we're gonna put on just the building? As it's written right now, we'd have to keep the whole thing standing and there's nothing. I mean, it seems like, yeah, we can put it up for sale, but you can't put a parking lot in, you can't change the footprint of the building because of the historical restrictions, what can you do?
Well, that, that'd be the key for the, the real estate agent would be to come up with a value, because basically what you're looking at is you're not gonna turn it into an apartment building, obviously, because there's not enough parking for that.
Yeah.
So it'd be very limited of a one or two family
Two condos.
Building or something.
Yeah, and, and where is the line for Article ninety-seven land versus the building land? You know, I mean, there's no specific.
Right.
That's true, it's all of the green space.
Designation, it's everything there is Article ninety-seven except the footprint of the building, so, what can you do with that?
Well, so they would only be able to have parking.
You could park in the garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they could, they could take, they could take down the fire station. That's not really part of the original
Building.
Building itself, so they could remove the fire station for parking on that side.
Yes.
If the historical.
Maybe a resourcer.
No, it's historical, it's not historical, it's a fire station that was built after that.
They have a few parking spaces.
It's not part of the original footprint of the building.
Yeah, I heard that from historical people too.
Yeah, okay, so that is true, okay.
So I'm asking her to split out the green space?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the, the green space is, is a non-starter at this point, I mean, that's gonna, it's staying in protection based on town meeting vote.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, basically find, find the value of the building itself.
Just, just the building?
Yep.
With the possibility of, of taking down the, uh,
Okay.
The little extension there?
The garage.
The garage, yeah, which, which means there's, there is parking.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Well.
It could be, yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, do we need to vote on that?
Yeah.
Uh, we voted on the non-binding resolution, but not about putting it up for sale, just the building.
I'll make a motion that we, um, I'll press Jennifer to have a conversation with the Realtor.
Continue our pursuit on the sale.
Correct.
Um, subject to the vote that was taken, or based on the vote taken on town meeting floor regarding the Article ninety-seven, and ask the Realtor to revise their, um, estimate of sale value should the building be limited to the footprint of the building and the parking area around it.
Okay. Second, second.
Second.
Okay, uh, any other discussion? I just have one thing, does that mean we can actually put it on the market?
Yeah, I would say.
Is that include putting it on the market? Cause we were kind of waiting for this Article ninety-seven decision to actually put it on the market.
Yeah, I would say as is with that little ball field, get it there tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah. You have the kids' parents, huh?
Yep.
Yep. Get home tonight, get court.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 If, if I could just say, my personal opinion on this is that if we're looking at fifty thousand dollars for the building as it is, then I would think it would be probably in the best interest of the town to retain that land and tear it down and just turn it into green space and let us figure out something in the future than to sell it for next to nothing, so, yeah, that would be mine.
But we'll keep the ballot question, yeah.
Is it gonna be an opportunity for anybody from North Hadley to weigh in? I, I understand there was a town meeting and, you know, but it was like, oh, we're gonna save the open space. We're not, we're not gonna give it up, that's what they decided, but they didn't, there was no really discussion about what are the options there and how, how far we should explore it. I'd love to have the, I mean, Bill Dwyer was from North Hadley and, you know, he has his opinions about what to do.
Said to tear the building down.
Yep.
Yeah, right, that's his, his opinion, I mean, I don't know, there's other people up there.
Again, we're not making a decision tonight, Alan, we're just trying to get.
I understand, I'm just thinking, before the, the people get a chance to roll in the referendum, maybe there should be some further opportunity to have a.
I'd be happy to put it on our agenda in a future meeting and people are welcome to come in.
Meeting up in North Hadley.
Yeah. People are welcome to contact us at any time now. Not that the conversation has started, I mean, let us know how you feel, no matter where you're from, you know, it's.
Call them.
You can call all of us, it's.
Yeah.
I have no problem.
Just with the consideration, though, that, you know, we are on a timeline here, because, uh, we're gonna be talking about big money very soon and, and people are concerned about taxes as they are now, just wait till we have another three million on foot.
I personally think we need either to look at tearing it down and just get it done, or, uh, get it sold, we don't want.
We're not going to put three million into it.
And we, we don't want to get a fifty thousand dollar bill or something to upgrade the heating system and the roof and all these things, so we just, I'm just saying, yeah, we don't want to do that, yeah.
Although we were ready to, if, if, if that article had passed at town meeting, it would have been on the market, but we'd still have to wait for the legislature to act, which is god knows how long that would take.
Yeah.
So at least now it sounds like we're making a cleaner cut, and maybe, and maybe marketing the building is gonna go nowhere, but maybe it still could happen.
Alright.
We'll find out soon.
Let's, uh, move on, I think the last, well, we have SWOT analysis update. Uh, select board will discuss coordinating a new SWOT, strength weaknesses, opportunities and threats analysis for each department. The department's prepared SWOT analysis in fiscal year two thousand sixteen. Put this on the agenda just basically to update the SWOT analysis that we did in two thousand sixteen, I thought we could use this as a tool to look at all these things when it comes time to, um, do performance reviews for all the department heads and just in determining what our capital needs are looking forward, what our budget needs are looking forward, if there's any kind of, you know, opportunities for sharing information between departments, uh, that we can use, so, um, kind of just wanted to put that out there to, uh, to get done and updated in town. I don't know if you guys have any comments, questions?
The only thing I'm just thinking about is the, um, this laser, laser beach, um, project is gonna wind up taking up some time um, with everybody getting on board on that, so I think, I mean, the initial SWOT analysis, there's no question, there's a lot of time that they put into that, so maybe if we're gonna ask them to do anything, we, we hone in on specific areas and just ask them to review the original analysis that they did and then just provide, you know, if they feel that there's an update with this particular, um, focus on, on capital.
Yeah. I mean, I was just, there's some pretty distinct tables in those SWOT analysis.
Yeah.
They're one page, I think.
Mm-hmm.
And we could just, what, all I'm thinking is updating those tables.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
And, and.
I just hope that we need to make it clear to them that that's all we're asking for.
Yeah, I'm not asking for a huge narrative and all kinds of things, just a snapshot of what's going on and, uh, what we can do.
Yeah, we don't need to over and date them with more work right now, as, as, you know, Molly says, they've got stuff that they're going to be doing for this fish thing.
Yeah, but, but I think if we limit it to what Christian's saying, then that's, and we give them time.
Cause they don't have anything else to do. But yes. You know, we keep putting more and more things on them to do, and I think, you know, we need to take a look at what we really need, need from them. Uh, we've put departments in capital and rotating them on what their needs were from the, you know, two thousand sixteen, uh, analysis and, you know, we're working on, um, updating the departments as they come up, and I think that was part of what the analysis came by. You know, and I'll say what you want, but that's, that's what I think at this point, but, um, doesn't hurt for them to take a look at it and, and see what's, what they need or what.
I mean, I think about somebody like, um, you know, Mike Spanknebel in particular, a lot has changed in his department since he did it, you know? But, and then in, in other departments, there may be some capital, like, and Chris Okafor's a brand new DPW director, you know, so I can see the two of them maybe having to put a little bit more thought into it, because Chris didn't do his, he inherited it, and, you know, Mike's just, we've, we've done so much and, and, and.
And he's still, and he's still so new at this point too, that, not exactly sure if he would have a full handle on what his department, I know he has specific things that he wants to do with increasing, uh, supervisory positions and things like that, but um, to actually go back in and look at the former SWOT analysis, you know, that would take some time for him to do that also, yeah.
Yeah, and the other reason too is just to get a feel for, you know, I feel like sometimes it's difficult to communicate what's happening in these departments and we don't get really big updates from each department head, what's going on, this is kind of a way to communicate what's going on in those departments to the select board and get a feel for what's happening and what their needs really are, um, but, you know, it's, it's.
And what were you thinking timeframe, I mean, like give them, you know, till August or something to do it, or?
I think they need some time, because I think we should.
Like maybe have them do August first or something?
Yeah, we could do that timeframe, I was just trying to look and see what, um.
I sent you that revised schedule.
Yeah, cause I wanted this to feed into, uh, the performance reviews and those kind of things, so we had
Mm-hmm.
That information going forward.
When would performance reviews be typically?
Right now, in the schedule, you know, I have them kind of, each major department head, um, which I've got five listed, or, four listed, four listed, sorry, um.
So there should be five, because we.
Police and fire, we've got those linked together, we could separate them, um.
From performance sampling, yeah.
Well, yeah, we would, I, I'm just looking at David's updates to my schedule that I sent him.
Okay, so police, fire, DPW.
So we have police, fire, town administrator, DPW director.
And inspections.
And inspections, yeah, total, so I was thinking we could do, uh, one a month, July, August, September, October, but we could make them more lumped together, I was just thinking for us, that way we don't have multiple people in here at one time. So that would start in July, what's on my, on the schedule right now? So they have
So maybe.
The rest of May, June, and, and we can push it toward the end of July.
Well, or, or have a deadline in the order of that you're taking the performance reviews?
We could do that too, yeah.
Whoever's coming later has more time.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd put public safety probably later, maybe do David and inspections earlier.
Yeah.
There's not much change in their departments.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, right, yeah, we could shift it around.
We know what David's SWOT analysis is like. All is lost.
Yeah.
SWOT, SWOT.
Okay. Do we want to take a vote for this?
Do you wanna, you, you and I want to sit down together and come up with, uh, a stronger, uh, schedule for all of this, cause it seems like it's all one piece?
Yeah.
And then we can bring this back for discussion at your next meeting.
Okay, I would just say, I would defer to the chair to determine the schedule for this, so we don't have to look at it again at another meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
That way we don't have to talk about it again.
Come on, you don't want to talk about SWOT analysis?
No.
So exciting, okay.
Alright.
Uh, senior center, library and fire substation updates.
Um, quick update, uh, just date wise of the library, um, we have a meeting, um, I won't be able to attend because I'll be here, but the next meeting is on the fifteenth. Um, and that is the bid opening, uh, or that's when the, yeah, when the bids are due back, so.
That's the sub-bids for the library?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sub-bids, okay.
Sub-bids, yeah.
Sub-bids, yeah.
Good.
And I have, um, general contractors, uh, bids are due in by June sixth and the sub-bids are due May twenty-first.
Uh, on the senior center that is moving forward full steam, we have a change order to vote on tonight for a clay pipe that was found uh, below grade, uh, it was an unknown pipe, and we have a, I believe that's a sixty-three hundred dollar change order to, um, to remove the pipe and fill in that section where it needed with gravel. It's been designed by the geotech engineer that we've worked with on the site, and it's been run by the DPW director to approve, so.
Can't we get the DPW over there to get rid of it? No, can we not do that?
I mean, it'd be in the middle of their construction.
No, they're, it's, it's under the construction site, and, uh, my big question to all of them was to make sure that it wasn't a sub-drain that was attached to the old Hooker School, but it seems like, uh, according to the map and the directions, that it's not, so. It's under the foundation of the new senior center, so they need to remove that. Are they gonna remove the whole thing or just a portion they need to for the building?
They're gonna remove the whole thing.
How many feet is it?
Um, it's on that map, I just lost it.
Pipe was, no, it says eight, eight feet, two inches below grade.
I think it's about, I want to say thirty feet long, but it might be, uh, longer than that.
Uh, it seems like a lot of money to dig up a pipe.
That's what I'm saying, right?
Unless we're talking hundreds of feet, I mean.
Eight feet, two inches below grade.
Yes.
Yeah, but we don't know.
And it goes down to ten feet below grade.
Yeah, they took four feet of, of cover off, so, uh, eight, nine, ten, twelve, twelve foots, twelve foot, two? Yeah, that's what they said, so that's.
I mean, I understand change orders happen and change orders is where, let's face it, G C's and others make their profits.
Of course.
But, I mean, that's a little silly, uh, without knowing how long the, the pipe actually is.
They TV it, that's how they.
It might be, oh, sixty linear feet is how long it is.
Okay.
And it's three thousand two hundred dollars for machine excavate and backfill. Twelve hundred forty dollars for labor for fabric, stone and compaction. Uh, twelve hundred dollars for three-quarter inch stone material, three hundred fifty dollars for filter fabric material. Three hundred dollars for five percent O H and P and sixty-three dollars for the one percent bond, is the cost breakdown.
So that's kind of a big one.
It's the next page.
Alright, I'll, I'll second.
Okay.
Click out of that and go to the next page, it's right there, the estimate.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A grudging.
And I will, I will let them know so they can proceed on this.
The, uh, and the roof has all been verified?
Roof is coming back on the fifteenth.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
You want to do it on the fifteenth?
Well, the email you sent explained it all, it's for warranties, so.
Yeah. And, um, I know we voted at the last meeting about the loan getting moved.
It's been done at the Young Men's Club there, I know that Chris said they dropped two dump trucks, so, I don't know. It's been done at the Young Men's Club, but I know that Chris said they dropped two dump trucks, so, I don't know.
Okay, they might've gotten it from the DPW then, instead of from, uh.
Yeah, they.
Oh, yeah, DPW transported it, that's what we got.
No, but it, it, it got, it was taken from the DPW yard, not the senior center site.
Yes.
Yeah.
I guess that's old loam from the elementary school that's used, so.
What's, what's left in the pile, it's, it's been depleted.
And then, I just wanted to confirm with us here that we agreed to ten thousand for change orders without select board approval, but I'm gonna try to bring them all to the select board. Was that the number we all agreed upon?
It was ten thousand.
Ten thousand, okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay.
As long as we're aware of what's going on, so.
Yeah.
So have they removed the clay pipe already or not?
No, no, they haven't, yeah, they were waiting on this, they, they were, yeah.
I figured that's the direction you were going.
Yeah, it's all done.
Well, that's.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, nope, that's everything I have, uh, that's, uh, everything on our agenda tonight, so motion to.
No.
Oh, sorry, announcements.
I, I have just two, um, there will be a Mount Warner Road closure tomorrow, um, so there will be a detour, uh, throughout the day, it's gonna be doing some road work over there, culvert work. Uh, also a reminder to everybody, this week is graduation week, and you'll have a mass exodus on Thursday, going out, uh, students leaving UMass, and you will also have, uh, them coming in on Thursday night also, because there's going to be an added function, uh, Friday over at UMass, so this whole weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
It's gonna be a mess.
Will be quite busy, and weeknight will be quite busy, so, just to give you a heads up.
So I'm leaving town.
I just have a few announcements, I just wanted to, it's National Teacher Appreciation Week, I just wanted to thank all the teachers at our school for all their hard work and dedication, thank you. And also, it's National School Nurse Day today, so I just wanted to thank, uh, Kirsten Kennedy at the elementary school, who I have worked with a lot with my kids, um, as they're sick and called home, and then, uh, Anne Mastra Totaro at the Hopkins Academy, who I don't know that well, but thank you, uh, and then just. It, it's National Nurses Week.
Healthcare work.
You stole my announcement.
Well, you can get over there, and then, uh, just, uh, remind everybody Memorial Day Parade on May twenty-sixth.
I just have one, uh, May sixteenth, um, is the silent auction at, um, the elementary school to benefit the preschool. So I forget what time it is, but there is a board up in front of the school, so.
And. We did do June fourth.
Oh. Oh, yeah, we, we said this last week, but I just wanna update everybody, Tuesday, June fourth, at one PM is the senior center groundbreaking ceremony over at the senior center behind Hooker School.
Yeah.
One o'clock?
At one o'clock. Any other announcements? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mother's Day tour?
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.